Good evening and welcome to the June 25, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer residents appointed by the City Council. There are four of us present tonight, so we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to City Council on certain items. However, on some items, we do have final decision-making authority subject to an appeal to City Council. For each item, there will be a staff report, a chance for the applicant to speak, and then time for public testimony before a discussion. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you're able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to begin, Mr. Marka-Greger, we're going to have some instructions on the webex.
Sure, Madam Chair, this is our seventh remote meeting due to the pandemic of the Planning Commission, and we want to make sure that people are able to participate. And on that note, anybody can call in at any time during the meeting. The phone number here is on the screen, 952-563-8926. You can call that number and receive instructions on how to testify. And if you prefer, you can do that via email as well, planning@bloomingtonmn.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item one.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Good to see you virtually this evening. I will share my screen and get a PowerPoint started here. Can you guys see that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So again, Nick Johnson in the Planning Division. What you have before you this evening is a city-initiated, city code amendment. This ordinance amendment proposes revisions to Chapter 17, 19, and 21 of the city code, and it dates back to some work that we did last summer, as well as some ongoing updates at the state legislature level for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. So we'll get right into it. Just as a refresher, these are some slides that Glenn showed at the review of one of these facilities last year, just to do a quick overview again of the different types of wireless sites. We have macro sites, these are the larger towers in the community, large antennas, very tall. There are approximately 120 of these macro facilities in the community, not just on towers, but also located on buildings and water towers and other structures as well. And then there's also a variety of wireless facilities in the right-of-way. When the code provisions were adopted that address these types of facilities in the right-of-way, there was less guidance in state statute as it pertained to these types of facilities. So the code provisions that date back from that 1998 update, some of which are out of date, and we'll explain the reasons why. So these facilities have been allowed in the right-of-way. The city had more discretion previously as with respect to requirements of co-location on existing towers, where these can be located, the height of these structures, the size of the antennas, where ground equipment can be located, et cetera. And the whole purpose of these regulations and as well as some of the changes that we're recommending is really to, it's multifaceted. One is just to minimize the visual impact of all of this equipment in the public right-of-way, but also just from a right-of-way management perspective, when you think about the Engineering Division and others who manage the city's infrastructure that's located in that right-of-way, as well as all the quasi-public or private utilities in that area. There gets to be a lot of equipment infrastructure in a confined space, so it can be a little bit of a tangle to manage. So these regulations are intended to assist with that, both the historic regulations and some of the changes. The image on the right is just an example of what we see. So this is just a small cell tower, shorter tower. And the facilities that we're going to be talking about tonight are really the small wireless facility type of equipment. These are smaller antennas in comparison to those macro antennas that I showed you earlier. And it all kind of works in a network in concert with one another, and we'll share a little bit more. So the state news, this new state standards were adopted in state statute in 2017. And what these requirements do is they do supersede or preempt our local ordinances as with respect to the requirements on small wireless facilities in our right-of-way. So in terms of kind of updates from the state law, new poles are allowed. It does allow for some separation standards, we'll talk about that. It did establish a 50-foot height limit in the state law for these facilities in public right-of-way. There was a lot of language in the statute that had to do with the fees and other kind of agreements and permitting processes, excuse me, that the city can require of installers and applicants who want to utilize the public right-of-way. I talked about the spacing standard, that the state law did give some space for cities to provide some separation requirements, and we'll talk about what we're proposing here, 600 feet, a little bit later. And the state law also did allow a window for conditional use permits to to give cities the discretion if they wanted to require conditional use permits for these uses in single-family residential zoning districts. So the common misnomer, the zoning districts in a zoning map do extend all the way out to the center line of the right-of-way. So when you have single-family uses, that zoning line doesn't just end at the front property line, but actually extends out into the public right-of-way. And so the way that our zoning code is structured now, these facilities are considered towers, which are conditional uses in the R1 zoning district. And that's why you saw two of these applications last year, in 2019. We reviewed two of these small cell wireless facilities via CUP. They were both final actions at the Planning Commission. And at that meeting, and kind of what we've discovered in studying this, is that if the city review of these facilities is quite perfunctory, if there's very little discretion on the city's end to recommend changes or to, in the case where public health, safety, welfare is not insured, there's very little discretion in that regard. It didn't make a lot of sense, I think, both from the staff level and from policymaker level, as well as with you guys, to require the conditional use permit process. And we got some of the kind of same feedback with what residents we have had conversations with about this type of equipment. Not that many contacted us when notified, but just in random conversations that we've had with homeowners who see these types of equipment deployed. So this ordinance before you this evening will address that CUP requirement, and we'll talk about some of the other changes. So these are the, where these facilities are located currently in the community. Most of them are clustered around the Mall of America and the South Loop District, as well as the Normandale Office Park. Because these are smaller antennas that utilize a different frequency than the macro sites, a higher frequency, they have more limited range and are more concentrated in their use. So they're really utilized in areas that have very high demands on the overall telecom system. And you can see there's a few others scattered around different parts of the community. We believe that as part of the kind of rollout and new technologies with wireless, that they're going to be increasing pressure to put more and more of these small cell facilities in the community in the right-of-way. And I would say that the ones that are out there today, it's really a mix between being located on private sites and located in the public right-of-way. With the changes we've seen in the state law, there is going to be more and more frequency to put these facilities in the right-of-way, because frankly, it is an easier approval process for these applicants to work with the city through a right-of-way permitting process than it would be to negotiate with private landowners. So right now, we have over 10 in the right-of-way. They're reviewed by Engineering and Public Works via a permit process. You know, I think what we've seen is that the possibility is that, you know, the number of these facilities could eventually outnumber the macro cells, you know, in a ratio of 10 to 1. This is kind of just some prognostication. So in other words, you know, in a long period of time from now, there could be many, many of these facilities in our community in public rights-a-ways. You know, what do we, just as a reminder of what these facilities often look like, here was one that we reviewed last year. They did a replacement of a existing public utility pole. They made the pole taller, and they extended an antenna on top of it, in a canister. And what you often have is other equipment, radios, ground equipment, other cables and whatnot, that are often also deployed with the antenna. So it's not just the antenna only, but that just gives you a flavor of kind of what these look like. So getting into the ordinance itself, what the specific changes are. And again, the whole intent of this is to align our code with the state law adopted in 2017, to make it consistent with state statute. So in terms of facility size, we previously, or we currently have a restriction of three cubic feet that would increase to six cubic feet, and this is really just to be consistent with the definition of a small wireless facility in state statute. In a kind of related performance standard, we also increased the maximum arm extension or attachment length off a pole from two feet to three feet. So just to note that as well. From a facility height perspective, as I noted before, the state law standard is whatever the greater of the 50 feet or the existing condition is, that's what the maximum height of this facility can be. In other words, if you're replacing an existing pole that's currently 60 feet, you could replace that pole with a small wireless facility at 60 feet. So it does allow for replacement of poles that are already existing and above that 50-foot threshold. It does, as I noted before, it does provide more guidance on allowing new poles in the public right-of-way, as opposed to a replacement or an attachment. And so that is what is reflected in the use table, and we'll talk about that and in the performance standards. But these, allowing new poles would be subject to a separation provision, and that was clearly allowed in the state law. And the reason why, for the distance of 600 feet, what that really translates to is you could have one of these per residential block, 600 feet being a pretty typical block length. There's a number of updates to just ground equipment in terms of required separation to sidewalks, setbacks to intersections, some of those things were updated. And then getting to, I think, probably the most critical component, at least per the, at least per previous Planning Commission discussions about this topic, is that we are changing this use and establishing it in the use table and changing it from a conditional use to how it's currently regulated, to just a permitted use. Again, subject to the permitting process with the Public Works Department, as well as these facilities are required to be consistent with our performance standards in Chapter 17. I do want to touch on one thing. We provided an update with respect to public correspondence we received earlier, but another thing that we frankly missed as staff, and it was an omission on our part, is that when we crafted this ordinance, we were really focused on those residential districts, because that's where we currently have been seeing the need for these conditional use permits. So we made all of the residential districts, we made a tower antenna in the right-of-way that are, you know, subject to those standards in Chapter 17. We made all those permitted uses. One thing we forgot to do is to update all of our commercial and industrial zoning district use tables with the exact same language. So one thing that we are requesting this evening is just a slight modification or revision to a suggested motion, guidance from the Planning Commission that you also support making the use, the technical use, just permitted within our commercial and industrial zoning districts as well. So you'll see that reflected in the suggested motion. Getting on to public engagement and correspondence that we've received when we started this process, as soon as we had a more firm draft to share with some of our wireless providers and applicants who have gone through this process in Bloomington and have deployed small wireless facilities, we touched base with them on, at an early point in the process, to let them know that it's something that we're working on. And then when we finally had a draft, we sent the draft out for review and comment to all the different applicants that we've had thus far. And it's not a, it's not a large number, it's probably five different entities who has done work in Bloomington with respect to these types of facilities. But we did get review comments back from Verizon Wireless, and they submitted kind of a number of different suggested revisions and modifications to the ordinance that they thought were appropriate. We certainly appreciate that they do that. It's good to get feedback from the external user of the ordinance, because they're the ones actually going through the permit process on the other side. So it's helpful to get their perspective and viewpoint. Basically, what we did, and what we sent out to you earlier, is we did review their suggested revisions and additions, kind of our small wireless team. And we did go through them and review them in terms of what do we think is, has merit and can be supported, and which one of the changes that they requested, which we do not concur with and therefore do not recommend be adopted. So we color-coded that for you. Hopefully, it was easy to kind of sort through that quickly with that color coding. I have just an example of that on the page. But the changes that we recommend be adopted were highlighted in green in that version, and the changes that we did not support were highlighted in orange. Getting into the specifics, there were some definitional changes and some permit and agreement clarifications that Verizon noted, which was really helpful. And we do think that those things have merit, we do support the adoption of those. More specifically, the ordinance specified that co-location agreements and other things should be required on all support structures, when in fact, that's really only applicable on city-owned facilities. So there's other entities that own poles in the right-of-way, Excel and others. So our location agreement is really just a city process, so some of those changes were welcomed. Two of the changes that Verizon requested that we do not support have to do with the separation of, for new poles. They requested shrinking that down to 300 feet, so that you could have two new poles per block. Again, just recognizing the intent and purpose of our updates was to, from a, you know, try and manage the right-of-way, as well as minimize the visual impact of just having more additional equipment and poles in the right-of-way. We did not support that reduction. The state law clearly specifies that separation is allowed on the part of the city. So we did not support that particular revision. And then Verizon also requested we eliminate an antenna surface size performance standard that the city has utilized. Our legal has evaluated that standard and does confirm that it does not conflict with the state law. So we'd like to keep that. And the reason that we have that antenna performance standard language of north surface greater than four square feet is that as this technology continues to adopt and evolve and change, you could have a scenario where some of these antennas are very narrow or thin and could therefore be quite large in the other dimensions as it relates to ultimate cubic dimension, which is all the state law specifies. So we would recommend to keep that, and there were some other changes as well that just have to do with how these, overall, how the city code relates to these small wireless facilities in terms of some references back to the zoning code in Chapter 19. I'm happy to go through some of those if there are questions, but in summary, Verizon provided us a good service by providing us these comments. We support some of them, don't support others. We've communicated that to them, and I'm sure they'll want to continue to engage and discuss that with us. But that's just an overview of how that process works. So we are recommending that the ordinance that goes forward to the City Council ultimately do include the revisions that we have highlighted in green. And ultimately, should Planning Commission confirm, or confer with that, or confer with that, we would revise the ordinance to take those changes into account. We are recommending approval of this ordinance. We recommend the Planning Commission recommend approval or recommend adoption. I do have a suggested motion for you here. You know, the big takeaway from this one is, again, currently, these uses are conditional use permits. And we think with just the ever-changing nature of this industry and what's coming down the pipe, that if we don't make these changes, we're likely to see a high volume of these conditional use permit applications for a facility that is fairly well-regulated by the state law and the city's permit process administered by Public Works. So that's the big point, and thanks, happy to take any questions. And Glenn is available, who's very knowledgeable about this, Brian Hanson in Engineering, Julie Long in Engineering. We have other staff available if there are questions.
Thank you. So one question I have regarding the separation. So it looks like the public also had suggested some language of, or otherwise approved by the city. So in not accepting that language and keeping the 600 feet, if there are situations where applicants want to try and have structures within that 600 feet, is there an avenue for them to do that, or is that simply a variance? Or how would they go about doing that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thanks for that question. That's a good question, because I should have mentioned this, but the way I described it, it's almost like then there's no opportunity to have additional facilities, and that's not the case, because one of the, what this regulation really only pertains to is adding new poles. And within a single 600-feet block of right-of-way, you know, there's any number of utility poles, lighting, you know, light poles. There's a number of different structures that they can either replace or co-locate on, just via a pole attachment permit. So there's a lot of other opportunities, and then beyond that, you know, what Verizon mentioned is that in, it's often in commercial or mixed-use districts where there's higher concentration of users, where they need more than one per 600. They also have the ability to negotiate with private landowners to install these facilities on light poles, on buildings, on other areas other than new poles in the public right-of-way. So I very much want to stress that there is multiple opportunities for the wireless companies to locate these types of facilities, regardless of that 600 separation. And so that's kind of what went into our thinking and when we evaluated that request.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is specific to the applications that we've seen fairly recently. Would any of these changes have affected those applications in any way other than conditional versus permitted use? So regarding 600 feet, four cubic, the area, some of those other, the, yeah, the three cubic feet and four square foot, would that have had any effect on the previous applications?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Brian Hanson, do you want to maybe address that question?
There we go, I'll leave myself, thank you. Yes, Commissioners, Madam Chair, all of the applications that we've seen to date would not be affected by these changes. All the applications that we've received are in compliance with the state statute. So really, the change to our city code here tonight would just, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, bring our code into alignment with the state statute. So all of the applications, and currently, we have eight applications pending for, and all for Verizon right now, for small cells in the right-of-way. And all those applications would still be, would still be, meet our standards with this revised code if that were to take effect.
If I may, this is Nick Johnson again. The only thing I'll add to that is that I would note that when we formulated some of the performance standards, Commissioner Albrecht, that the state isn't very explicit about. In other words, there's some areas that the state statute is silent on. I would note that we did evaluate some of the more recent facilities we have reviewed and approved in order to make sure that we weren't kind of tying their hands of just, you know, having to come back and change our code again, because it just doesn't, it's not consistent with the current technology. So we did evaluate that with respect to extension length, the width of, the diameter of new poles, some of those other kind of devil-in-the-detail type things that as you review plans, we want to make sure that we're not, you know, we're respecting the state law, we're minimizing the impact of the right-of-way, but at the same time, we're still adopting standards that is actually workable for the applicants.
Any other questions for staff? I'm not seeing any, and since the city is the applicant, do we have anyone available for public testimony, or?
Madam Chair, nobody signed up ahead of time, registered ahead of time. And looking at the attendees, I recognize all the names as staff members, so we have nobody here to testify tonight.
All right, so then do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Commissioner Goldsman?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Goldsman, second by Commissioner Albrecht. All those in favor say aye. Commissioner Goodrum?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
That is an aye from me, motion passes 4-0. Moving on to discussion. I guess I can start. This seems, I think, like a good way to go, considering that there is not a lot of discretion, and if there's going to be a lot of conditional use applications because of this, it just seems, hopefully, like saving a lot of time and energy from staff and the commission for things that we don't really have discretion over. I appreciate staff's looking at the public comments and advising as to what they do and do not recommend adoption. I am in agreement with the staff's recommendations on those. Also, I know there was some, I think, reference to a question regarding notice and so forth with these, and I think it makes sense that with other utilities, there's not a notice requirement, and so there shouldn't really, for parity, be one with this. So I am in support of the current motion that's being put forth by staff. Other discussion? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to echo your comments. I agree, also regarding notice, I also picked that up and agree with not, not having a need for notice at that point, too. I think this is, this is great work by staff, and I want to thank Excel Energy, or sorry, for Verizon Wireless for contributing their comments. I think that was helpful for clarification.
Any other discussion, or are there any Commissioners who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Madam Chair. If I could, I'd like to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
In case PL 2020-93, I move to recommend the adoption of an ordinance updating the city's regulations pertaining to small wireless facilities installed in the public right-of-way to ensure compliance with Minnesota statute, including revised commercial and industrial zoning district use tables, and including staff-supported revisions to the ordinance submitted by the public.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Goldsman, second by Commissioner Albrecht. All those in favor say aye. Commissioner Goodrum?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
That is an aye from me, motion passes 4-0. Motion passes four zero. This will move on to the July twenty-seventh City Council meeting. Moving on to item two, which is approval of meeting synopsis minutes from June eleventh. All Commissioners were present. Do I have a motion to approve the June eleventh meeting minutes? Commissioner Albrecht?
I move to approve the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis of June eleventh, twenty twenty, as presented.
Commissioner Goldman?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Albrecht, second by Commissioner Goldman. All those in favor say aye. Commissioner Goodrum?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
And that is an aye from me. Motion passes four zero. That will conclude the meeting. However, I believe Mr. Mark Card had something you wanted to say.
Yes, Madam Chair, so depending on what the City Council does with upcoming appointments to the Planning Commission, this may be the last meeting for Chairperson Bennett and Vice-Chairperson Goodrum. So I wanted to recognize that, and thank you both for six years of excellent service. Being on the Planning Commission, it's a big-time commitment. There's no pay, but you do have the opportunity to influence policy and development in the city. So I hope it was a positive six years for both of you. And on behalf of staff, thank you again for your leadership and all you've done.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.